January 11, 2018, meeting of the Williamsburg City Council will come to order. Mr. Trivett, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Zhang.
Here.
Mr. Pons.
Here.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Here.
Ms. Ramsey.
Here.
Before us, we have the meetings and minutes of the city council meetings from December 11, 2017, the joint one with the Economic Development Authority, the December 14 city council meeting, and the December 21 legislative briefing. Mr. Trivett, is there anything you'd like to share?
Yes, I just wanted to make the council aware that earlier today, I did make some small changes to the minutes from December 21. Didn't change substantially, just clarified some issues I thought were not clear.
Move we approve?
Second.
And do we need to move to approve as amended?
With the amended.
Yes.
Move we approve as amended?
Second.
Mr. Trivett.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Fraley.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
In matters of special privilege, we have none today. That takes us to public hearings. Our only public hearing is a request of HSAPT Land LLC, which I assume is High Street Apartments Land LLC, for a special use permit to reduce the required side yard setback from 15 feet to seven feet for a proposed 96-unit development project.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Fraley and members of council. Steve Middleton with HS Apartment Land LLC is proposing to reconfigure the previously approved townhouse lots into eight two-story apartment buildings containing 96 units. The previously approved townhouse lot lines were extinguished by action of council at the November 9, 2017, meeting. The applicant would like to use the existing roads and utilities that were installed for the townhouse development as part of his apartment complex layout. Some of the proposed buildings encroach into the setbacks along the existing private rights of way, and the applicant is requesting that the reduction in setbacks be from 15 feet down to seven feet, which is consistent with the setbacks of the adjacent townhouses that have already been constructed. This area is bounded by Trayburn Drive to the west, Sterling Manor Drive to the north, Middle Street to the east, and Kings Manor Drive on the south. The High Street-Williamsburg area was designated as economic development land use in the 2013 comprehensive plan, and this property is and all of the adjacent properties are zoned ED2. Although the property is not in the Architectural Review District or the Corridor Protection District, the applicant had provided renderings of the anticipated design, and those renderings were included in your packages. The eight apartment buildings total, oops, sorry, the eight apartment buildings total about 105,000 square feet. Get back to my notes, sorry. And there are 64 one-bedroom units and 32 two-bedroom units. There are approximately, there are 166 parking spaces provided, which is more than 152 that are required. The existing streets, using the existing streets, buildings 2, 4, 6, 7, and 8 encroach into the setbacks 3.2 feet to 8 feet. The proposed setback of seven feet accommodates all of the proposed buildings and preserves the existing streets and utilities. The applicant noted that the setback in the adjacent townhomes is approximately seven and a half feet in his narrative, and setback reductions were previously granted for the Sterling Manor garages, the parking terrace, and the cinema in the adjacent areas. Staff recommended approval for the reduction of setbacks from 15 feet to seven feet at the Planning Commission on December 20. The applicant spoke, only the applicant spoke during the public hearing, and following the hearing, the Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend approval for the reduction of setbacks to city council. Just prior to this meeting, I received an email from the applicant, and he is on his way here but stuck in traffic somewhere between here and Richmond, so I will do my best to answer any questions that you may have.
Before we open the public hearing, any questions for Ms. Burke?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Zhang.
Just a quick question in terms of, sorry to interrupt, from Planning Commission, was there anything worthy to note that was mentioned among the discussion?
There were some notations about some site plan concerns. They are going to screen the HVAC units that are adjacent to the streets using a fence where there's not room for landscaping, but other than that, it was just some questions about renderings because at the time, the applicant had not provided renderings, and I can actually scroll through those here on the screen as well. But those are the only two questions and discussion items from Planning Commission.
So in terms of that one question with the site plan concern, how, has that been resolved, basically?
Yes, that was, that was part of their site plan approval.
Gotcha, okay. No further questions. Thank you.
Do you know, do you have any historical information about why the setbacks were so much greater before?
I believe originally that in, for the use of a townhouse, they're only required to be seven and a half feet. Because these are apartments and not townhouses, then it changes the setback requirements for the structure.
Okay, thank you.
But from a practical perspective?
They essentially look like townhouses.
They appear to be townhouses.
Yes.
Okay, with that, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody who would like to address council on this matter, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, come back to council. Just to follow up on Mr. Foster's point there, these buildings are not nearly the mass of the existing apartments, and while they don't exactly resemble the townhouses that are on-site, the scale is similar.
Yeah.
And so, to me, this makes sense, especially in an area where we are looking for a more urban feel.
Correct.
As opposed to a suburban set. Thoughts, comments?
I would agree with that, not, you know, given that seven is allowable with townhomes, so it's not overly intrusive or destructive to the environment. I think if it helps the developer get the project going, I think it's good for, for the new residents that live there, but it's also good for the commerce base at High Street. And so, we need that type of density, and we need people in that area with money in their pockets to spend it, shopping there to, you know, get that successful, make the whole element more successful.
Yeah, just, I mean, I recall what the vice mayor has said in the past, and it's encouraging to see that there's activity happening again with this, with High Street and the area there. Generally agree with all the comments that have been said already, and it just makes sense to move forward, seems sound with the comprehensive plan and its original intent when High Street first came up as well, so.
You know, somebody may have mentioned to me recently that the aspect of these being in apartments, and I just don't think we should be afraid of apartments. I think as we look to the future, I think people are downsizing and living in apartments versus owning their own real estate is something that I think is on the rise, and so supporting this makes sense.
Well, certainly complimentary, it's already on the site.
Exactly, right, right.
Move we approve the special use permit as recommended by Planning Commission?
Second.
Mr. Trivett, if you can make a decision as to who gets the second there, if you can call the roll.
I'll defer. Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Fraley.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
We have no background presentations today, so we'll move on to reports, monthly financial statement.
Might email your, the guy from High Street and tell him to turn around.
Ms. Burke, I don't know if you have a way of getting in touch with him, but you might let him know. With us today, we have the opportunity to welcome interim Finance Director Vicki Herrick.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to point out a couple items on the report. It is at the six-month mark, and we finally are equal in respect to the accruals that Phil kept saying we're going to line up, with one exception, and that's the room and meal. So on the front page, because it's cash basis and the way we do accruals, it's only reporting five months for this year, six months for last year. So it's very helpful to always look on page five because that's where we record the revenues in the month of the activity, not the cash received. So it's a true accrual basis, and it gives you a good picture of that. But also, on page five, just wanted to make a quick notation, the local 1% tax, looks like it's down, 21%, a lot of that has to do with some of the cross-jurisdictional problems, and we are making some transfers to James City County. And lastly, just as a quick note, on the last page, investment, we did receive, I didn't put it on this report, we did receive, of course, the $13 million that's held in the SNAP account. It's not reported on here, but we did get that, and I'm still working with the auditors because it's a very complicated transaction, and they're supposed to get with me tomorrow, finally, and we're going to finalize that journal entry. So I haven't done the journal entry to account for that bond issuance. So next month, you should see that 13 million on your report. I just didn't want that to look questionable.
Questions?
Ms. Eric.
Thank you.
The, so you talk about a transfer for the sales tax because we're down, we'll see transfer coming this way to make it, no?
No.
It'll be down even further?
I'm not sure at what point we are with the reconciliation, but this month, they, we, James City County got some of the money that we had been getting previously.
If you would recall, Finance Director Phil Sarah had reported out that when the Harris Teeter out in Lightfoot originally opened, the state had coded that towards the city of Williamsburg and not James City County. So there was an accrual of tax revenues from some of the county businesses that was caught later between the two commissioner revenues and the state, and that deals with a lot of the negatives that the cities had in sales tax revenue this year, funding that back to the appropriate jurisdiction. We're getting paid appropriately at the end of the period for what was spent in the city, James City is due what was spent in James City, and if the state inadvertently sent that to us, then they need to get that credited back.
Other questions?
No.
Ms. Eric, when we get to the end of the fiscal year, June 30, July 1, then all of the, as of July, everything should start to line up?
Not for room and meal.
Okay.
We're going to have to wait until we compare fiscal year 18 to fiscal year 19. When we start looking at that report, that's when it's going to line up.
So at the end of the first month in fiscal year 19, when we have that, the July numbers for room and meal, that, that will line up?
So at the August meeting?
It'll be one month to one month.
Okay.
Right, because we're not reporting those two months, we accrue them back to the year. So actually, your July is going to show no room and meal coming in because it's going to be accrued to the prior year, and that makes up for that one-month lag. So starting with fiscal year 19, it will all line up.
Okay, great. Thank you. Monthly departmental operating reports?
Staff is available if the council had any questions on their.
Moving on to city manager reports, the first is the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, Greenplay LLC. Ms. Hutton, are you going to give an introduction?
So, good afternoon, members of city council. This afternoon, I'd like to introduce Mr. Art Thatcher. He is from Greenplay LLC, and we have selected Greenplay as our consultant for our Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Welcome, Mr. Thatcher.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager. Thank you for allowing me to be here. As Robbie said, Greenplay is the, is the firm that you've hired to do your Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Greenplay is a, we're a Parks and Recreation Management Consulting Firm. We're headquartered in Colorado, and we have consultants that live all over the country and work all over the country. I'm, I'm one of the principals with Greenplay, and I have the pleasure of living in Hampton, Virginia, and so I am very local. I spent the first 30 years of my career as a Parks and Recreation Administrator, started my, my career back in the 80s as the Parks and Recreation Director for the city of Pecosin, spent some time as the Operations Director for Norfolk Fest Events, worked in the city of Hampton as their Superintendent of Parks and Recreation, had the pleasure of working with Robbie for quite a number of years while she was in the city of Hampton, and then finished my career with the city of Norfolk. And I've been with Greenplay for a little over four years now. And so, we're the prime on the, on the project. We also have two landscape design firms, Draper Aiden, who's a local firm, and Site Concepts, who does a lot of work with us out of Raleigh. They'll be doing the inventory and level of service analysis, and then RRC is the, is the fourth firm that's working with us on this project, and they're our survey firm. And so just to kind of give you a little bit of a background about Greenplay's approach, really, as we look at Parks and Recreation Master Plans, we look at the, kind of how, how it balances in this concept of sustainability. And so we know that in order for the department to be successful, that really you need to look at not only the social and recreation side of the Parks and Recreation Department, but you also need to look at that environmental side, the parks, the open space, as well as the economic benefit and that, and that fiscal benefit. So we look at all, all three of those pieces, make sure that they are in balance as we, as we develop these projects. And so this is a, an infographic about kind of how we go through this process. It's a four-stage process. We believe that public engagement is the, kind of the keystone for, for any master plan because if the community is not engaged in it and they, and they aren't bought into it, then they are not going to support it. And so we, we spend a lot of time there. The, kind of this first phase is our information gathering. We do focus groups, stakeholder meetings, we do our surveying, we do our inventory level of service analysis. Once we've gathered all of that data, we come back and do our findings envisioning, where we report all of the data that we've, that we've gathered and kind of what those recurring themes are, and we begin to build our recommendations from there. We'll go, we'll draft our recommendations and, and action steps to, to, to address those, and then the final stage is that, is that final plan and then implementation. So kind of those steps to success. We had our kickoff meeting on the 8th of December, met, talked about critical success factors, and really laid out the project. The next phase will be our community engagement, which is scheduled for the 23rd and 24th, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. And then, as I, as I mentioned, our parks, the inventory level of service analysis, we'll be looking at your open space and trails, your sports tourism, kind of the administrative piece, and then the findings envisionings, as I spoke about earlier. So as I mentioned, we, we do a kind of a multi-approach to our community engagement. We don't do one process. So we'll be doing focus groups, we'll be doing stakeholder meetings, we'll be going out, talking with people, we'll be doing some intercept surveying to gather information, and then we customize our survey from that information that we gather. So that's our, what we call our SWOT analysis side of things. We'll build our needs assessment survey, and then, and then from there, we'll begin to, we'll continue to report out to the community. So the survey, RRC, we've worked with RRC on, on over 100 projects all across the country, and so we'll be doing a mailed statistically valid survey. So we do a random mailing to 300 households in the community, and, and so you'll have a, the, those that receive the surveys will have an opportunity to fill it out in a paper in the, in the paper form and mail it back in a, in a self-addressed stamped envelope. They'll also have the option to, to go online, and they have a one-time-use password, that they can fill it out either on their computer, on their phone, on their tablet, if they prefer to take that option. What we also do is, after we start receiving back those mailed surveys, that random survey, we do an open link of that exact same survey so that anybody in the community can, can participate in the survey. We know the, kind of the unique relationship that Williamsburg has with York County and with James City County, and also with the College of William &amp; Mary. So we have the opportunity to get input from those users that are using your services here and that are in those other localities. We can keep those separate, there are two separate URLs, so we can weigh those and, and get that information and see where those key points are through that process. We'll also be doing, we'll also be reaching out to the students at William &amp; Mary to kind of get some of their input. We'll use a separate URL for that as well so that we can kind of grasp what the students are looking for in recreation opportunities within the community, not only at the, at the university. So as I mentioned, Site Concepts and Draper Aiden will be doing our inventory level of service analysis. They'll be going out during that 23rd and 24th when we're here, they'll be going out, they're doing site maps now, they'll go out and they'll look at all the components within the parks, and they'll grade each one of those components on a, a scale of one to three, one being that it's not operating, it's not functioning the way that it was designed to function, may need to be repaired, may need to be replaced. Those twos are, they're functioning the way that they were designed to operate, but they may need a little TLC, maybe need some paint, maybe a little bit of repair, some mulch. And then threes are those that are operating above, so it may be a new piece of playground equipment that you've just installed. They'll look at all of those. We also look at not only the, the point of where they are, but we look at those comfort and convenience options, those, that connectivity, because we know that a playground that's sitting out in the middle of a field in the sun with nothing around it is not going to get used as much as one that's in a park setting with benches, available restrooms, families are going to be more, more inclined to use those facilities. So we look at those and grade those as well, so. We'll be doing mapping, kind of looking at all of those sites, looking at maps, mapping all of your facilities and all of those amenities, as well as looking at your trails. We'll be looking at how population distribution works into where your population centers are in relationship to your recreation amenities and your recreation facilities, so that we can kind of statistically report on where you may have gaps in service. We also look at those other service providers that are, that are providing service within the area, the school systems, and those, so that we're not duplicating any services as we look at recommendations. So again, we look at your capacities, what your capacity is for, for your facilities, and how you're meeting the needs of the community. So this is our, kind of our 10-month schedule. We, as I said, we did our kickoff in December, we'll be here in January, kind of doing our information gathering, also be looking at the open space and trails, and then you see that kind of gap in there. This is kind of the worst-case scenario of, we'll be, we'll be doing the survey at that time, we'll also be looking at your sports tourism elements, as well as your administrative elements, and putting all of those together, and kind of that May timeframe is where we'll be reporting all of that back, coming back to the community. I'll be in close contact with, with Robbie and staff throughout that process. Those aren't kind of dead times that we're not here, we're still engaged in, in this full process through there, finishing up in the August timeframe with, with presenting a final document to you. And so, as I mentioned earlier, public engagement, we've got it scheduled for the 23rd and 24th. We have locations determined now, we'll be looking at, at Quarter Path and the, and the Community Building for those two, for those meetings. We have a series of invitation and open meetings for focus group stakeholders. We'll also be doing an, an open public meeting on the evening of the 24th, where anybody in the community can come. That'll be at the Community Building. And so what we'll do is I'll put a PowerPoint together from everything that we've heard from the, from the focus groups, present that to the community, and then we'll get feedback and validation from those people that are there, kind of participating in that. The Parks and Recreation Department has, has developed and kind of is marketing their hashtag #PlayWburg, and so we're using that as, as kind of the tagline also for the master planning process. Since it's something that the community knows and knows that it's part of Parks and Recreation, we're just going to build on that brand as we, as we go through this process. So it's kind of the, the process in a nutshell, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if, if you want any clarification on anything. One of the things that, that we'll do is I'll come back periodically throughout this process to report back to you. I know I've, I've talked with Robbie during the information gathering process, would like to have an opportunity to, to meet with each of you and kind of talk to you about your vision for Parks and Recreation, the master plan and those things, to kind of include that as, as part of our information gathering process.
Thank you, Mr. Thatcher. Questions?
Questions, just maybe some comments. Sending out 300 mailed surveys?
3,000.
Oh, 3,000, okay, I misheard you. 3,000, that's very different. I was, I was imagining you're expecting 10%, and I was thinking 30, we're going to base this on 30 surveys, so much better. What, do we, do we know how that compares to our biannual citizen survey?
If they're both statistically valid surveys, they're probably very similar in their sample size.
Sample size, yeah.
To get that same number, I think the National Citizen Survey may send out a few more, but there's a cost to that that we buy into.
The other thing is, Ms. Hutton's probably told you this, but people who live in James City County, York County, the city of Williamsburg, aren't necessarily good at knowing where they live. So when you, when you have a unique URL that you send out to a certain population, you know, I'm sure you'll, I'm sure you'll take, take care of that issue, but a lot of folks give us credit for things that are elsewhere and vice versa.
Such as the state with sales tax.
Exactly, exactly. Mislocated Harris Teeter. But it sounds great, and I really, I really like how you're, it's reaching out to the community in so many different ways, and it's really important, and it shows it's going to be a good sample.
Thank you.
And thank you for your presentation, and as others have said, Parks and Recreation is very important to the city of Williamsburg, and I'm particularly fond of sports tourism and the value that it brings to the city and the growth potential there. And to Scott's point about the, the survey and reaching people, so in addition to the mailed surveys, you'll be reaching out and letting, I mean, will there be an email sent to all residents so that they would be able to participate, or?
We will, we will do multiple, kind of multiple ways of getting the word out. The department and the city has a very strong social media presence, so we'll push it out on social media. Once we kind of develop the survey, we'll have that URL, URL available beyond the website. They can email those to participants. I know we talked about some other options.
We'll also have the survey available in several different forms, electronic, paper, for anybody that walks into the Quarter Path Recreation Center as well. And then we'll also send out an opportunity to all of our users that participate in our programs.
Okay, because we've talked at the, on Monday about different ways to, to reach people and trying to go to the method that people interact with, and so just wanted to be sure about that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And I would echo the sentiment about, you know, making sure we get out to the right stakeholders, and I'm sure Robbie and other staff members will help direct you in the, in that right direction so that we talk to the right people. Not that there may be wrong people, but I think from my perspective, like Ms. Ramsey, sports tourism is an important aspect, and I think talking to people that kind of, in that industry, that more dependent upon it would be important, and we don't want to exclude those folks. But it, from a general sense, I think this is a good process to go through to evaluate, you know, where we are with our Parks and Recreation, identify future opportunities, and, you know, I think it's a great service for residents to go through this process, residents and businesses, so thank you. And to speaking with you.
Thanks for your presentations. I have no questions, and all I wanted to say is just echo what my colleagues have said already. It's really exciting to see, you know, in this presentation and as you presented the specifics on your approach, particularly, I was impressed with the public engagement aspect of that. I think that's incredibly important, not to say that our previous or prior consultants haven't done that, but I've been pretty impressed by the way that you, you plan to go about with this, so I'm looking forward to seeing the results, and thank you for being here today.
Great, thank you. Just a couple of questions. You mentioned the relationship we have with James City County and York County, also have the College of William &amp; Mary, Colonial Williamsburg. There's a lot of recreational aspects and park-like amenities in all four of those. How do, to what degree are you able to take those into account as part of the overall community inventory and still keep them separate from the city evaluation?
Well, what we'll do is we, Site Concepts and Draper Aiden, they, we have all of your, kind of your GIS information of, of your parks and your, your outdoor resources, and so we'll map those and we'll do our level of service analysis and our inventory on those. And then what we'll, we'll begin to do is add layers on for other service providers. So we'll add the layers on for York County and James City County, for the school system, for the College of William &amp; Mary. So we'll begin to, to develop this, this color-coded map, which will show those facilities and those kind of service areas. So we'll, we'll see where there are true gaps in service and where there, there may be some redundancy, actually, you know, where there may be overlaps, where, where you have, I don't want to say excess, but you have a, a large concentration of recreational opportunities within a given area.
And as, as you're identifying the areas or opportunities for improvement, short and long-term, to what degree are financial considerations taken into account other than to maybe separate the ones that are more expensive from those that are less expensive? Is there any kind of perspective of what the community? Is there any kind of perspective of what the community's overall tolerance for a budget would be, or is that not worried about in the report?
Very much worried about in the report. Having spent 30 years as a Parks and Recreation Director, you know, I've seen reports and master plans that have come in that have pie in the sky recommendations, and basically they either sat on the shelf, or they worked really well as a doorstop. And so, knowing that, one of the things that we pride ourselves in is really kind of giving you realistic recommendations, and kind of ways to reach those recommendations. So, we use multiple data points to kind of come up with our priorities. So, from the focus groups and stakeholder meetings, from the surveys, from talking with staff, from talking with council. And then, one of the things that we'll also be doing is a leadership summit. So, we'll be talking with the kind of the leaders in Parks and Recreation, and the communities that all work together here. So, we can really kind of look at, you know, what those priorities are, and where everybody's kind of headed in the recreation realm. Through the survey, normally one of the things that we ask is a tolerance for paying for some of the capital improvements. And so, we typically get a really rich response from that, both from the mailed survey, from the random survey, as well as the open link.
And you mentioned multiple times the separate URLs that you have at your disposal. I don't, this is just my opinion. I'm more concerned about knowing the specific input you receive from any resident within the city of Williamsburg, as opposed to separating out the students from the other residents. So, we'd know who is in Williamsburg to the degree that that's possible. And then, what's the collective input from James City County and York County?
Yes.
Because I don't, to me, whether it's a student or a full-time resident, we're all residents of the city.
Right. And so, we can, one of the things that the survey firm is able to do, and is part of our reporting, is we can geocode all of the responses. And so, we can pull those out based on those that are Williamsburg residents, and then we can also pull out those that are Williamsburg, or James City County, York County residents, as well as the College of William &amp; Mary residents. And we can combine them, we can kind of mix and match. There are a lot of ways that we can kind of look at that data, to make sure that we're kind of reporting what is best for the community.
So, to me, the really important part of this is, we've spent a lot of time, a lot of effort, and a lot of energy talking about and trying to act on placemaking, about creating a sense of community that's attractive and supportive of all the people who live and work here, and visit here, but also makes Williamsburg a place that more people will want to live. And parks and recreation are an enormous part of that. The sense that people get about a place based upon the natural aesthetic, and then the amenities that people have for recreation are hugely important. So, I think that's one of the reasons that, coming together, and we're very much looking forward to what you have to share with us in August.
Great, I appreciate that. One of the other things that Green Play does, and I do, is we teach at recreation conferences. And so, I've presented on a couple of occasions at the national conference, as well as Virginia, Maryland, and California on placemaking, and the economic benefits of Parks and Recreation, and how it really enriches communities. So, I appreciate you saying that, and it's right in line with what we're doing.
Touches on all the right points, all the time. Going, building on, that's pretty dull, inside and out. Touching in on the tolerance that you spoke of, there's no feasibility aspect. I mean, you're not doing an analysis on what returns we may get with other, with certain investments in our Parks and Recs.
No.
Right. So, you'll ask questions about, in terms of tolerance, what are you willing, what are we, as a community, willing to spend on whatever it is?
Trails. Yes. Well, kind of in a more general fashion, we'll look at, or ask the question of, of the, kind of the recommendations that the community comes up with, you know, that there are ways that you can pay for those, through a bond, through sales tax, through, you know, in lieu of fees, those things. And so, we can list those, working with the manager and Robbie, kind of list those, and see where people would, you know, would kind of have the most tolerance for that.
And so, in following up with feasibility studies, we've done some feasibility studies on aquatic centers and field houses. Will you have an opportunity, or is there a reason to incorporate those studies, or what you may glean from those studies into your report?
Yes. Robbie has already shared all of those with us. One of the things that we ask for, kind of as part of the process, are any other reports that you have, any other, you know, past surveys you've done in the past five years, so that we can make sure that we can look at those, look at the recommendations, and incorporate those into our report. And also, to make sure that you don't have something, a report out there that you're currently working on, that we make a recommendation that is opposite, or is in conflict with one of those recommendations. So, we make sure that we try and dovetail those. If there is something that we see, maybe a report that you got five years ago, and trends have changed, and the community has changed, we may make a recommendation that you reconsider, or you look at how you're approaching that.
Thank you, Mr. Thatcher.
Great, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next item under City Manager Reports is the budget amendment for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018, Proposed Resolution 18-01.
Hello again. Yes, before you is Proposed Resolution 1801 to adjust the fiscal year 2018 budget for two small grants that we received in. One's for the General Fund, $5,020. And it's the federal police grant that they will use for the selective enforcement. And then we also have one that will go into the law enforcement block grant for $4,200. And that's the federal burn justice assistance grant that they're going to use to purchase medication for the opioid overdoses. And also, it's a net zero, but there's going to be a reprogramming of projects. The balance of $102,954.76 will be, needs to be transferred from the telephone system replacement, and the $160,000 that's in the parking garage equipment, needs to be combined and added to the parking study implementation, for a total of $262,954.76.
Straightforward.
Mr. Settler?
I move that City Council approved Proposed Resolution 18-01, a resolution amending the General Fund Law Enforcement Block Grant Fund and Sales Tax Fund budgets for the city of Williamsburg, Virginia, for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Trivett?
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Takes us to City Attorney Reports, Michelle?
Nothing today.
Unfinished business. Anybody have new business? This brings us to open forum, and we have one speaker's card, Mr. Gary Shelley. And when Mr. Shelley's done, if anybody else would like to address counsel in any matter, please feel free to come forward. Good afternoon, Mr. Shelley.
Hi, good afternoon, thank you very much. I am Gary Shelley, I live at 205 Indian Springs Road. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your prompt and your thorough response to the concerns I had that I voiced at my last appearance, which was in November. Very much appreciate it. I think like many of us, we have New Year's resolutions. One of my resolutions is to put an end to my frequent appearances here in open forum. It's actually not a new resolution, it's one I've had for some time, but for one reason or other, I haven't been able to completely get satisfied with concerns that I've had. But I feel very confident that we will at this point. I'm addressing mostly the members today, not you, Mayor, but others who are not so familiar with the time I've put in and invested in this over the past 15 years. You're one of the longest-serving people we have now in our city, not only in council, but working for the city. But I'm sure for many of the rest of you, there are some questions about, who is this guy? What prompts him to come forward? Why is he doing this? What got him started in the first place? Well, it began in the early 2000s, about 15 years ago, as I became quite aware of the concerns the students had with their relationship with the city, and it was not pretty. And my advice to them was, you have to get involved. You have to get involved in the system, you have to work with the system. Vote, you need to run for office, you need to be heard at council meetings and the like. And we've had some successes, we've had some major successes over the years, but we have a long way to go. In 2003, there was a very palpable sense of prejudice, and that feeling, town gown relationships were very bad, and they continued to decline for many years, up until Mr. Foster's election, I think was a turning point. When students voiced their, they came out in record numbers, and showed their discontent with the city. And I think that, if nothing else, it showed to the city that there is indeed this feeling of discontent. It has been, and I'm sorry to say that I feel that it still exists today. I certainly see it in my neighborhood. Meetings I attended last year, people speaking out very negatively about students living around them in particular. But I have spoken very publicly, very passionately, as an advocate for students, not only here, but in forums that are either sponsored by the city, sometimes on campus. And I've consistently supported their right to be amongst us. And I've always tried to promote their well-being and place in this community. Over the next couple sessions, I intend to speak about two issues in particular. One is the 110 Harrison Avenue issue. There's a lot more to that issue than meets the eye. And what I want to bring into focus is how this issue took place, how the whole transaction took place, some behind-the-scenes things that took place, mistakes that were made, and the consequences because of it. And hopefully, you'll get a fuller understanding of what exactly did happen there. It was more than just, well, the city overpaid for a house, and it took a loss, inevitable loss years later. There's much more to it than that. The other issue I intend to speak about were the student voting rights, controversies that took place some years ago now. This whole issue of students being able to vote in town is fundamental to their place in the city. If you're not allowed to vote, you're not considered to be on equal footing with other people. Students deserve the right to be on equal footing with the rest of us. And that's something that a lot of people still, I'm very, very sad to say, find difficult to accept. So, look forward to seeing me at some point, I don't know if it'll be next month or the month after. It's going to take a little while to do a thorough job, as I would like to, to explain these things to you all, and hopefully you'll understand the perspective that I and students have taken on these issues. And hopefully, after you've heard me out, my presentations will challenge you to perhaps reevaluate your own positions, feelings on students, and where they belong in the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shelley. Would anybody else like to address counsel? Seeing no one come forward, close the open forum? Anything for closed session?
Not today.
You have a motion?
Adjourn.
Second?
Mr. Trivett?
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
We're adjourned.